Good evening, I call to order the meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Burr Ridge for Monday, September 22, 2025. Officer Kevin, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Officer Kevin, could I have your last name?
Martina.
Thank you, Martina.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Francis?
Here.
Trustee Skiafa?
Here.
Trustee Pavezza?
Here.
Trustee Snyder?
Yep.
Trustee Matal?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Mayor Grasso?
Here.
Everyone's here.
All right, there are no presentations in public or public hearings tonight, so that takes us to the consent agenda. Trustee Pavezza has asked for 8B to be removed, so I will now begin the consent agenda. An item shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any one trustee or anyone present at the meeting. Those items marked with an asterisk are considered to be on the consent agenda. A roll call shall be taken on the approval of the consent agenda and recorded in the minutes as an omnibus vote. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be discussed by the board, open for public comment, and voted upon during the meeting. Minutes: 5A, approval of regular board meeting of August 25, 2025; B, receive and file comprehensive plan update committee meeting of August 20, 2025; C, receive and file plan commission meeting of September 15, 2025. Under ordinances, A, approval of an ordinance approving a request for a variation from zoning ordinance section 6D to permit a corner side yard setback of 30 feet instead of the minimum 40 feet required, VO5, 2025, 7703 Hamilton Avenue, Cervantes, Sorrells. B, approval of an ordinance approving a request for a text amendment to section 4I-5 of the Burr Ridge zoning ordinance to permit architectural entrance structures in corner side yards and uphold the current regulations pertaining to the size of a wing wall in conjunction with an architectural entrance structure, Z12, 2025, text amendment, architectural entrance structures, PDA. 7A, approval of a resolution endorsing the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus's Greenest Region Compact. 8, considerations: C, approval of a contract with Web's Edge Productions of London, England, for video production services in the amount of $26,300. Is that dollars or euros?
Dollars.
Okay. D, approval of a contract for the annual fall brush pickup to Kramer Tree Specialists of West Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $28,863. E, approval of a raffle license for Illinois Spina Biffida Association fundraiser on October 4, 2025, at the Village of Burr Ridge Car Show at the Village Center. F, approval of vendor list dated September 8, 2025, for the fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $201,889.18 for all funds, plus $568,132.84 for payroll periods ending August 16 and August 30, 2025, for grand total of $770,022.2. And G, approval of vendor list dated September 22, 2025, for the fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $774,837.11 for all funds, plus $288,370.72 for payroll period ending September 13, 2025, for a grand total of $163,207.83. With that, can I get a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda? 5, A, B, C; 6, A, B; and 7, A; 8, C, D, E, F, and G.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion at the board level? Any comment from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes. Next item removed from the consent agenda was item 8B, approval of contracts for the Pump Center Improvements Project with Illinois Pump, Inc. of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, for pumps and motors in the total amount of $434,500, with the Metropolitan Pump Company of Romeo Ville, Illinois, for SCADA Systems modifications in the amount of $49,637 and even. Trustee Pavezza?
I asked for this to be removed. I'm not against the approval of it, but I thought that since it's so much money, that the public should have a little better description of what we're spending that money on.
Okay, and therefore, we have David up here.
Well, sure. Thanks, Trustee Pavezza, Mayor. The two contracts at hand are what we're calling Phase 1 of our Pump Center Improvements Project. This two-year, two-phase project is really to modernize the pump center and add operational flexibility. As we know, the pump center originates all of our Burr Ridge drinking water. Everything we get from Bedford Park comes into the 3 million gallon reservoir at the pump center, which is located on German Church Road. If we have to open up our emergency interconnect with Justice Willow Springs, that goes into the reservoir at the pump center. From that location, then, we've got four large pumps that bring it up to the pressures that you enjoy in your homes. As it's leaving our facility, it gets re-chlorinated from the pump center. Then it gets out into our system. Again, the pump center was constructed in 1983. A lot of that equipment is original. In fact, two of those four pumps are original to the construction. One of them is unreparable. Of the other two, they were last modernized or they were last touched in 2000. So all the other components are now over 25 years old. And back in 2000, we did some process piping improvements, so that's the basic piping that's inside there. And then modernizing, I think, the fill valve at that time. But again, what we're trying to do is modernize in the Phase 1. We're looking at the replacement of those four pumps. Again, two are original, they're over 45 years old, two are at the end of their service life, so we're bringing them all up to the same capacity, 150 horsepower, that's about 2,100 gallons per minute. That far exceeds the pumping capacity, really, of the entire pump center, because we're limited by pumps outside. But having those four of equal size allows us flexibility to move among each one, so we don't wear on one more consistently. Also included in Phase 1 is the SCADA improvements. Again, this is the supervisory data, supervisor control and data acquisition, so this is everything our water operators need in one place. It's watching the flows in, the flows out, chlorination levels, water tower levels, everything in our system, all on one screen. Again, the serviceability of that is declining, so to kind of meet the industry standards as well as comply with what our emergency interconnect providers are working off of, this is the system we're proposing through Metropolitan Industries. That's the second of two contracts. The third phase, which is not for consideration right now, I'm sorry, the third contract that's not consideration right now is the HVAC improvements. All the electronics that we're talking about are temperature and humidity sensitive, so the HVAC system that we have now currently can't keep up with that. And it's more so contingent on what we do in Phase 2. So the transition, what I'll talk to you about is Phase 2, is the electronics and chlorination systems. The electronics, again, are fairly old, and what we need is a motor control center and a variable frequency drive installations on all four pumps. That lets us ramp up from, you know, to the maximum 150 horsepower, but from anything down below that. So if you can imagine things like water hammer, like pumps suddenly starting and stopping cause pressure surges in our system, you don't get that anymore with variable frequency drive, VFDs. That's all electronic, that has a very long lead time, so that's why we're proposing that in Phase 2. The chlorination system uses a chlorine gas, which is far more hazardous than some of the chlorine, liquid chlorine, that most modern systems are using. So that's also included in our Phase 2 project. So again, Phase 1 is really just the pumps, those four pumps, replacing those up to current standards, all at the same 150 horsepower. And then the SCADA system, which is the supervisor control, the brains of the system, being modernized now. So I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Was this put out to bid? I'm sorry, yes?
Dave, I think this is great. What's this first phase with the pumps? Is there anything right behind it for Phase 2 for the pumps, or we're done for 25 years?
Actually, Phase 1 puts us in good position for rehabilitating the North Water Tower. So North Water Tower is 2 million gallons of storage up in the air that when we have to rehabilitate it, like we did with our South Water Tower, you know that that's got to be drained, and it's out of commission until we can get that back up. What happens then is we run off of station pressure. So now having four pumps that are versatile allows us that flexibility to take 2 million gallons of storage out for fire flows and emergencies and peak demand, but we can operate more consistently off of those for dependable pumps.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have one question, two, actually. Did this go out to bid? How was the pricing handled?
Yes, our consultant, CMT, was awarded that contract back in June, and they provided the bids and the specs to reputable vendors for the equipment.
Does this, and my second question is, does this give us a better platform to detect those homes in particular where the water seems now to be running, especially over the winter, when people are out of town for long periods of time, probably in Florida or Arizona? And then, you know, we, the trustees, and I get the call, how come you didn't pick up the fact that my water was running and somebody left it on, et cetera, et cetera? Does this help us to remedy that problem?
Well, this is the water we're pumping from our pump center out into the system. What you're referring to is the metered water that is received in the houses. That's a utility billing function, that's through our AMS, our Automated Metering Infrastructure, AMI. That's really run through utility billing, detected by our finance department, almost monitored every day.
And I think we have a policy of monitoring that pretty closely, especially during the, you know, the snowbird season.
Yeah, so we're actually going to be making an improvement to that. We've identified a company called Aquahawk. Aquahawk is going to give us some ancillary services that are in addition to what we have from a staffing perspective. So right now, because we only have one position which monitors the actual meter, and we do that every day, we have to go from worst to first, so if there's a 10,000 gallon a day leak, we have to handle that ahead of 100 gallon a day leak. Not to say that both are not important to every resident, but to help reduce that, we've engaged Aquahawk, who for about 600 bucks a month is going to take those smaller deals off of our plate. The bigger ones tend to be something that fails with a meter issue or a B-box issue, something that's pretty more, it's a lot more structural and requires staff interaction. That'll help us be a lot quicker on those smaller things that are, again, still important, but just they don't rise to the same level of priority as a big, major leak, which do happen.
Okay. Anybody, yes, Guy?
Just a quick comment here, folks. I reviewed the price quote from the recommended vendor, Illinois Pump Incorporated, and the pumps that they're specifying, Gould's pumps, are industry standards for this type of service. Materials of construction are compatible with the services they're intended for. Chestnuts and seals are recommended, mechanical seals, those are top shelf seals. So based on all of what is being proposed, I support this purchase.
Okay. Al, does that answer your questions?
I make a motion, we approve the contracts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion at the trustee level? Any question from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Zero.
Six zero, the motion passes. Okay, that takes us to item 8A, consideration of Village Hall development. Evan?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as directed, this is a standing agenda item that will appear on the agenda going forward, even if there's nothing specific to talk about. We don't have anything specific to talk about today. We don't have anything significant, I should say. We did approve the LEAGET Architects Design Contract on August 25. We've begun to do just some measuring, some laser measuring of the current facility, just to get a lay of the land. And I would say we're probably 30 days away from any real discussion about how things physically fit together. Again, we've got a good scope of plan, but we want to work with them a little bit more closely to understand if we can make the product just a little bit more tight in terms of value and square footage. But again, we're probably 30 days away from any material discussions about that at this time.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of Evan on the Village Hall development at this stage? I have reminded Evan to keep us vigilant as to when we should encourage, and we are always encouraging the residents to come in and comment on this, especially that it looks like this will be done via selling this building. And so we do want to hear from the public, any concerns about selling this building. Right now, we're still dealing with the price and the LOI, and there may be further developments on that after tonight, but I'm still encouraging Evan to remind the public and the residents to come in and comment if they have questions or statements about the sale of this building.
So on that note, the board has asked that the village put something on the website. So if you go to our website under Community, Village Hall Redevelopment, right here on the right, click on that. This will be something, if you've been in the CNH page, it'll resemble the page. So if you come down here to the timeline, this will be everything that's been discussed at the board level. People can click here and do everything they want to. It goes back a couple of years. But again, this is going to be your one-stop-shop, as you said, under the Village Hall Redevelopment page on the website.
Okay. Any other questions about this topic tonight? I'm sorry. Yes, Guy?
So Evan, you mentioned it'd be 30 days before we had some drawings to look at.
I would say full drawings will be a little bit further out than that. I'm just talking to even begin to understand how that scope plan that we've kind of looked at, the bubble drawing, begins to take any sort of hands-on motion. I would say it's probably more like 90 days before we'll talk at very specific, high levels.
That's okay. Just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that takes us now to public comments. Is there, are there any public comments tonight? Okay, the record show no public comments. Reports and communications from village officials. Anita?
All right. Well, I had the pleasure of attending the Mecca Run, Mecca Moves event on Saturday, September 20. They were very appreciative of the help from the Village Hall and the staff, Public Works, Police Department, because everyone really pitched in to make the event a success. It was an event where people from different backgrounds, ages, abilities came together as a community, so it was very nice. Now we're looking forward to the car show on October 20th, sorry, October 4th. It's at the Village Center parking lot. Pre-registration admission is $15. Entrance move-in begins at 9:00 a.m., and the event will be from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Guy?
I'd like to add that the car show is free for the spectators.
Right.
Thank you.
Good point.
Any other comments? Okay, two comments from me. I'm sorry, I missed the Mecca Moves. Again, want to thank the Mecca Center for literally stepping up this year again. I heard it was a nice event. Janet and I were away for 10 days, and we literally got back to Burr Ridge at 4:30 today. But one of the things we had to do on our vacation was unfortunately miss this event. And it's moving along, it's getting better every year.
300 attendees this time.
And so the Mecca Center, really historically, in this short period of time, has saved this event, because it was on the edge of being extinct, I think. So again, another thank you to the Mecca Center for stepping up. Also, I have an announcement. I learned today on my travels back to Burr Ridge that Burr Ridge was voted the number one community in the Midwest for a place to retire by Travel and Leisure Magazine.
Oh, okay. We'll have to look that up.
So for all of us senior citizens on the board here and the dais tonight.
We should share that link on the website.
Yeah, we don't have to move. We're in the number one Midwest village for retiring, according to Travel and Leisure Magazine. I think overall, we were number 17 around the country, but number one in the Midwest. Might be nicer weather places that are in the top 16. So nice honor, always great to get recognition for a very special place that we call Burr Ridge. Okay, with that, I'd like a motion to go into executive session and come out?
Are we coming out and voting on 12A? So then we need to just recess.
Okay, so I need a motion to go into executive session. The reason for the executive session is the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body pursuant to ILCS 120.
Five ILCS. You're missing the five.
I'm missing the five, that's right. Five ILCS, 120, 2C6.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any comment? Roll call, please.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes, we're in executive session. Okay. I call tonight's meeting back to order. What time is it?
7:02.
7:02 p.m. We're back in open session. Evan?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call first, thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Francis?
Here.
Trustee Skiafa?
Here.
Trustee Pavezza?
Here.
Trustee Snyder?
Here.
Trustee Matal?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Mayor Grasso?
Here. Evan, the floor is yours.
Point of order, Mayor, Village Attorney, should we read the agenda item? We have 12A.
Yes, we're, Mayor, you would announce that we're on item 12A.
Oh, okay. Sorry, didn't even see it. We're on item 12, reconvene meeting, 12A, consideration to direct the village administrator to accept a letter of intent related to the sale of Village Hall, 7660 County Line Road. Evan?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're here tonight to discuss the consideration of a proposal from 814 Acquisitions from Michigan. 814 Acquisitions, on behalf of a daycare company, has submitted an LOI to the village to purchase Village Hall and the land that it sits on, excluding the Veterans Memorial. There are three parcels at the Village Hall. One of them is on the Veterans Memorial, the two are on the Village Hall proper. The offer is to purchase the two northern parcels on which the Village Hall building sits. It's about 1.87 acres. 814 has submitted a non-binding letter of intent to the village dated September 10 to purchase the 1.87 acre piece of land with the building for $2.3 million. In net, the village would net $2.185 million from this sale due to the seller, as is customary in both residential and commercial development, due to the seller paying the fees of the broker for the deal. And in this case, the brokerage fees are 5%, making the net proceeds from the sale itself being $2.185 million. So again, $2,185,000. Again, the intent of this is to, and I'll put the elevation up on the screen, the intent, and this is a prototype, not for, not to be considered final in any capacity, to build the N Family Club Daycare. So the daycare is the use that would be considered as most binding here. Couple of shots here. Again, these are very prototypical. These are not final. These are just what was submitted to us as part of the LOI. As you can see, this here is for daycare of early childhood ages. This is not a K to 8 public school or private school. This is a for young people only daycare. Daycare is listed as a special use in the T1 Transitional District in which the Village Hall lies. And so in keeping with the idea that whatever leaves with the Village Hall should be really buildable, we feel like this has, at least meets the spirit of the zoning ordinance in that it's already listed as a special use, and it's already been, we've already permitted special uses elsewhere in the T1 Transitional District. Let me just very quickly pull up a map of the property, again, just to make sure we're being extremely clear about what we're talking about. I apologize, I did not have this pulled up. Okay. So again, Village Hall is here, the pink tent or whatever that is. In effect, what we're doing here is we're saying, let me turn on the measure tool, this is what is under consideration. So we own the Veterans Memorial site, we own that piece of parking lot there. That will remain the village's heretofore. That is not part of any potential sale. To be clear, the only thing the board is considering tonight is to enter into a non-binding LOI. So we are in no shape or form entering into a final sale agreement tonight. What would have to happen at this point, should the board accept the LOI, is that the petitioner would then begin to work with staff to develop plans to go to the Plan Commission to receive zoning entitlement. Now, they may not get it. The Plan Commission and the board can make their own decision just on the zoning, and if they did not get zoning, then we couldn't execute the sale. So there's two tracks there, the zoning side, and then finally the sales side. The LOI calls for a period of 30 days to, I'm sorry, 120 days to due diligence on the property and seek zoning entitlement, and then 30 to close, should they receive it. So at minimum, we're talking about five months of lead time here. We're going into 2026 at this point. There'd be no less than four or five opportunities for the public to be aware of this and the like. But again, just want to close it out by saying that this highlighted portion, not the Veterans Memorial, is on offer from 814 Acquisitions for $2.3 million, netting out $2.185 million to the village. There are some additional fees that we'd be recouping through the subdivision process, such as permit fees, utility fees, subdivision fees, that would push our total net revenue of the sale to over $2.25 million, thus being over a quarter of a million dollars to the good compared to our original budget we projected when we put together some of our initial feeling on the Village Hall development. Again, we projected to get $2 million from the sale. We're about 10 to 15% over that value based on this offer and the development in front of you. So with that, I'll yield it to you, Mayor. I'll be here to answer any questions about this at this point.
Sure. Due diligence, of course, gives the potential buyer, you know, the right to look through the building and decide if there are things that need to be corrected, but that's not likely going to happen here, because it's our understanding that the buyer intends to demolish the building, and so we're not going to worry about if there's a roof leak or a pipe burst or leaking, et cetera, et cetera. So that gives us even more security in this offer that it's rather real, at least so far. Is there a financing contingency?
Not to my knowledge, no. Not that I, that would be fleshed out in a purchase agreement, but I don't know that they've indicated that they were, they were in. Not clearly, at least. Financing contingency.
Yeah, that's kind of what I read between the lines, but that could still arise. So I want to be sure that the public has still got a lot of time to comment on this. There's a 120-day due diligence, as I said?
It's 120 days and then 30 days to close once it's accepted, but that's a, if it's accepted, actually.
Let's just call it 120 days. Inspection period. During that 120 days, it should be enough time for us to continue to urge the public, if some people want to speak for this issue. We put out as much information as we possibly can and answer as many questions. I'd ask you, trustees, to please keep me apprised of any communications you get on this issue, so that we have the same message. We may have different questions about it, but we do want to have the same message out in answer to questions. So I'd ask you, please, to let me know what the questions are. Of course, you can answer them as you see fit, but I'd like to know what your answers are, so that... are so that we're telling everybody the same thing or at least the same theme, okay? Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Anita?
So, the earnest money is twenty-five thousand, which is one point zero eight percent of the purchase price, which is on the lower side because, for whatever reason, if the deal falls through, then after five months, we are back to the drawing board and we've lost time. And then, we could, as Al pointed out, we would be starting that project, assuming that we're going to get the money. I don't know what the traditional earnest money is, but I would think it would be more. I would say close to two percent of the price would be fair. I don't know, but it's worth exploring.
It's a good question. Yes, Tony?
So, I see there's no exclusivity here. So, we can maintain our marketing efforts.
That was part of the discussion, was they wanted some flexibility in lieu of that happening.
What flexibility?
So, you'll note, I think to your point, we had discussed that the inspection period calls for some earnest money to put down, and a lot of it's non-refundable, but applicable to the purchase price, so it wouldn't be coming off in any way. But we've talked about the idea of it being non-exclusive, to your point, and that was left out by design. So, if we were to get a two point seven five million dollar offer or something like that, we could engage them with no fault on our side.
Right, because this is a non-binding.
Correct.
Letter of intent.
Yeah, that's what a letter of intent, if properly drafted, is not binding.
Yeah, well, they actually, under the letter of intent, the parties' agreement, the purchase agreement, needs to be fleshed out and then executed because they'll make their deposit of the earnest money upon execution of the purchase agreement, and their one hundred and twenty day inspection period becomes a factor from the date of the purchase agreement. So, we need to get the contract terms approved, and then that clock starts running, the earnest money deposit is made. If they extend the one hundred and twenty days, the twenty-five thousand dollar additional earnest money deposit is non-refundable, but it goes against the purchase price. So, we've got to have an agreement to, after we approve this letter of intent, so.
And so, what's the next step in starting to draft that agreement?
Just our office and the purchaser's attorney will exchange, you know, contract forms.
Who drafts the purchase agreement? The buyer's attorney?
Typically, an offer is made on a contract form, so they can have the first go at it, but either or, we're going to be involved, so.
Yeah, they would typically make the offer to answer your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Joe?
I think this would be a great, to go through with this facility because our residents, we had the gas station over on Route eighty-three. We filled this room. Anytime a gas station comes in our area or facility, I really believe that our residents will come out and voice their opinions. If we were to get an offer from a, said, gas station or something like that, to put one here, I think it would not be received. Something like this, making Burr Ridge look what they want.
Yeah, I agree with you, Joe. I think that this is something that, I think we would feel very comfortable if this building had to be sold and demolished, that it'd be turned over for educational or daycare purposes. That would certainly set the tone for years to come for what is on the site. It's also educational in relation to the Veterans' Memorial. I know Trustee Smith was concerned about the impact on the, as he should be, as a member of the committee, and he was expressing his concern to make sure that we have dominion over the Veterans' Memorial, which we do, and the parking, which we do. That's why Evan showed you exactly what parcels we're speaking of. So, right now, very optimistic. It's certainly well above the one point eight appraisal. I would think that the inspection period isn't, is really a time to inspect this building since they're going to just probably inspect it, how to take it down, and there probably is going to be some environmental that's in every site. So, I'm also encouraged that, you know, deal's likely to go through because they're not worried about the condition of this building.
The one hundred and twenty days really for the zoning primarily. I mean, they need a special use, so. And I believe that the purpose of the letter of intent was simply to lock in a purchase price. You had the opportunity to go into closed session and discuss that as opposed to them just willy-nilly submitting a contract with, let's say, a lower price, and then that could be rejected. By voting on this, you're pretty much saying, this is the price that we're willing to sell this property at for this user.
Okay, so this is step one. Yes, Guy?
One question and then two topics I'd like to talk about.
Sure.
So, what you're saying, Mr. Village Attorney, is that the purchase price would be contingent, or the purchase would be contingent upon special use approval at some point?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The purchase agreement, the contract will have this inspection period contingency in it, not just in the letter of intent, but that'll be a contract clause also.
So, that leads into my first topic of discussion, in that this building falls into the T-one transitional zoning district that runs up and down County Line Road, transitional zoning. And one of the elements of that transitional zoning district is residential character of commercial buildings. If you look at the police station, the MPS La Raya Financial Planters, the Kensington offices to the north, the former funeral home, those all have residential characters in this rendering that was submitted. I see a warehouse look. I see a Butler Building look, a pre-engineered Building look. So, I think we need to get upfront on day one and say that if they build, if they purchase the property and if they demolish the existing building, and if they put up a new building, it would have their residential character conforming to the T-one transitional district and go through the planning, plan commission process for that approval.
Right, I think that's a very good point. And of course, I would hope that they would want to make it look as residential as possible if they're going to use it for.
That's not what the rendering shows, so.
Right, no, I.
So, I want to get upfront.
I understand what you're saying.
Get that on board upfront. And second, I'd like staff to put together a timeline, a timeline for the sale of this building and marry that to a timeline for the construction of the new Village Hall and see how those align because I want to make sure that we're not booted out this building if we sell this building, and we're not booted out, we have no place to go for nine months or a year.
I think that would be a contract term also.
I think that's been discussed, hasn't it?
There's two ways of doing it. Yes, there, you can have it where we have a contingent on us moving out. That's option one. Option two is it's a contingent on we go when you're ready or go when you're approved. If it turned out to be option two, we've already discussed where would we go, and we feel like for a short period of time, we could move to somewhere else and still stay afloat. Wouldn't want to do it permanently, but we have at least considered that contingency because there would be some time between, and I don't know exactly how much time to your question, between a theoretical approval of this and a theoretical construction opening across the street.
I'd like to see that.
Yes.
Timeline, start analyzing that so, and then we can address what options or what alternatives we need to plan for. This purchaser may want to demolish the day after they close.
Correct.
We don't know.
We've talked about that contingency and we will answer that question.
We'll make sure we get a couple of days at least, but a couple of weeks to move out, so.
I'm thinking of the architect and the work that they're doing for the addition next door, and ninety days out for plans, there's approvals involved. We wouldn't be breaking ground until next spring.
Correct.
And figure a year for construction?
Correct.
Okay, so that puts us in spring of 2027 before we would move in. Now, before we'd be ready to move over there.
Correct.
And this building may be demolished before that, so I'd like to see a timeline.
Absolutely.
For both, for both parcels.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Just in kind of regards to what Trustee Francis was talking about with contingencies, pretend the designs come in, everything looks good, but then we start getting bids on the new Village Hall, and by chance, they're exceeding what we had expected. Are we able, as a village, to at least have contingencies to back out of the contract that is currently on our table?
I'm sure something like that could be negotiated.
It can be a term that would require the purchaser's consent to that, so that's a possibility. I don't know if that's going to be a reality.
I mean, we're, we don't have any designs. We don't, I mean, it's, it's a lot of discussion. It's a lot of guessing about how much that Village Hall will cost, but if by chance it's exceeding what we even ever thought of, it would be nice to have a contingency to at least maybe back out. The other thing Mayor brought up about the Veterans' Memorial, thank you. Couple other keys about the memorial, water supply and electrical that probably needs to be somewhere in there as far as allowing us to add those features for the memorial.
Just so everyone is aware, the water and the electrical for that is currently supplied by this building, and we're already working to design how we would move it across the street, drill onto the street. It sounds complex, but it really is not that challenging to do. So, we would move that across the street by tapping into the water main or by running a pipe. We've already got a pipe running between the two for our IT needs, so we feel like we could readily do that and supply those needs.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just commenting, I mean, we, one of the reasons we went with Leggett is that of their history and their track record, and it would be out of character for them to come forward with the designs that we're coming forward with, and then suddenly we go out to bid and the prices are way out of line. That's not why we hired them. So, it's a little better than guesswork. It's not guesswork. It is estimates, so there's no certainty. I agree with you there, but I think you can feel comfortable that that possibility, as counsel said, while a possibility is not very likely. The timing is really my concern, our concern, making sure that we can smoothly leave here and get in there without too much disruption. And I think we'll probably have a little contest for the staff to see who earns the right to push down the plunger to blow up the building.
Well, there is going to be a delay between when you have to move out here and when you can move in there. I think we pretty much discussed that, Evan, and I about, there's, there's going to be a time period where they're going to want possession, and that building's not going to be completed across the way, and where are you going?
Yeah, I think, I think the only thing I'll say is, is the board is raising very good questions, and staff is, we're not unaware of these realities. We're aware that there are some issues with this building. We are aware that there may be better ROI from going across the street, but we are also aware that there are some unanswered questions at this point, and that's where having good cadence of process, you've talked about having special meetings to further discuss this process, all good things. There always is something we could think of that we haven't thought of or could do better. I just want everyone to think and be know that these are good questions that I want to hear because many heads make for like work in this type of thing, and we want to make sure we're doing this at a pace that the community supports and can absorb. So, I welcome all these things. These are great perspectives to bring forward, and it helps staff do our job more effectively for the community, so thank you for doing that.
And I would add that you've started the process by having Leggett come on board now instead of waiting until you had a signed contract or a closing would be even worse. So, you're talking about having a zoning contingency, and that's going to take some time, but in the meantime, work on getting a design is going on already, so.
We started, we started this process, what, six months, eight months ago, going through? Or it's over a year. We said, this building's falling down. We got to look at this, and we really invested the time. We looked at the numbers.
We started in 2006, but.
That's, well, it's been on my plate for a while.
I have it 2021.
I really think that the numbers you really went through and said, look, here's what we have in the capital fund and all the rest of the funds, even this way, that way, you hit contingencies in place. So, I think that both you and Mr. Smith, Mr. Mayor, you have done a good job on that.
No, and I'll just say that, you know, we've had some good discussions with the architects, you know. Trustee Smith, you've brought up, can we share offices? You know, we're going to continue to look at that. You know, we've talked about parking sharing, and how do we do those things? We don't want to bring forth a product that is anything more than we need and/or meets the community's goals, and I think the board is the representatives of that. So, you know, we're not trying to build too small a facility, but we are saying that, you know, there are examples that we're currently using, the share offices, that we want to reflect more accurately in the plan, and so, if we feel good about our number today, I feel like the number's only going to get better if we sharpen our pencil through the design process. So, right now, I feel very good. I think this is a good offer to start with. Again, start is the right word. You know, the board had directed me a while ago to, you know, this project was really contingent on the sale, and I think we've got a good offer to start with, and I would advise we accept it and move forward and just see where it goes.
Offer in a sense of an LOI. Okay. Are we done with questions? Yes, Tony?
I just want to confirm that the cadence of the letter of intent, so they want us to sign the purchase agreement, so we have to get, we have to go back and forth, negotiate a purchase agreement?
They want us to sign the letter of intent, which is non-binding, which would initiate the lawyers getting together to put together a purchase agreement, which we would want to move as fast as possible.
Then, when we sign the purchase agreement, that's when their due diligence starts.
Hundred and twenty days starts then, yes. Hundred and twenty days from the effective date of the purchase agreement, so.
Okay.
It's when the party's signed, so.
Party's signed, we get earnest, earnest money?
Yes.
Okay, and that's normal?
Yeah, the amounts.
They're not going to be able to do a zoning application generally unless they have.
The purchase agreement.
You know, a purchase agreement in hand.
Yeah, all right.
Hence, my request for the timelines.
Yep. And we have some other thoughts on the timeline consistent with what you brought up, but I'm not willing to, they're still here, and so, if we can solidify it better in this whole process, I'll bring that forward also.
I just, I will update the Village Hall page and the packet tomorrow because some of this was in closed session, wasn't on the packet, so just so the public's aware and you want to look more through this, this will be up tomorrow on the website.
Okay. All right. With that, can I get a motion to direct the village administrator to accept a letter of intent related to the sale of Village Hall seven six six zero County Line Road?
So moved. Second.
I have a movement, a second. Any discussion at the board level? Roll call, please.
No public present for public discussion.
Thank you for that. Any public comment? I didn't say that because there's nobody here in the room. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Six zero.
Six oh.
Six oh, the motion passes. That takes us to item thirteen, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn to October thirteen, 2025, at six thirty PM?
Second.
Second.
A movement, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, we're adjourned.